Welcome back. The Northampton School Committee is going to be, is resuming now an open session. We already opened an open session at 6:45 and then convened into executive session. We've now moved out of executive session, back into open session. And we'll now move on to our agenda. We have a couple of quick organizational issues before we move into the public comment period. The first item on the agenda is the election of vice chair person. That's on my agenda in the organization. And so I know we deferred on this issue in January because there was some question about whether or not the charter would have affected it. In looking at, in looking through it and discussing it in the Rules and Policy Committee, I think the intent of the charter is that this election would take place at the beginning of a session, at the beginning of a new kind of two-year term as defined in the new two-year terms for all the school committees. But for this particular election, it's sort of within the discretion of the school committee if it wants to reelect the vice chair in this, this particular year. And so I think Ms. Pick felt that because she had been elected to a one-year term when she was elected, that she wouldn't want to just assume a two-year term, that she wanted the body to, for this sort of interim period, to hold another election. So, that being said, I would open the floor to nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Ed Zahousky for vice chair.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Stephanie again for vice chair, to continue.
Okay. So, any other nominations? Okay. So we have two nominations on the floor. We have a nomination for Stephanie Pick and for Ed Zahousky.
I accept the nomination.
Well, I was gonna, well, I believe you've accepted the nomination.
We've never been in this position before. We were very clear when we came here to the table. And I actually didn't know they were doing this to me. But I, I will defer happily if this is something that Ed wants and if it's something that you want to take on, I will support that.
Well, I know that you have been doing it for years. And I know last year we amended our bylaws to permit you to serve yet another year, extending what our bylaws say. And we do have the term limit in there. And we're not here to debate the term limit tonight, but we certainly are here to discuss whether or not we would want to, and I realize that with the new charter, it may or may not be significant. But again, look at our old rules and make a change yet for another year, allowing a vice chair to serve two years beyond what our bylaws once said. So with that said, and with no one else coming forward other than the sitting vice chair, I would certainly entertain a vote with my name in the ring for the position.
Okay. So I didn't actually ask for a vote to close the nominations, but I believe we've closed nominations. So I guess you've made a statement. Do you wish to make a statement of any comment?
If Ed is willing to do it, then I will not accept the nomination and defer.
Okay. So you're withdrawing your...
Is there discussion on nominations and such?
Certainly if you, certainly there can be discussion or comments about any of this.
I just want to say that my nomination of Ed is no reflection, that it contains no ill will whatsoever. I greatly appreciate all of the work that you have done as vice chair. We really, I think you've done an excellent job, and it was no reflection on your performance. It's simply an opportunity to allow someone else to take over who, who wants to do the work.
And I would say the same thing, only to reiterate what I said a few moments ago. My nomination isn't in, in any way, shape, or form, an accusation against your performance or your hard work and all that you've done in the last four years. In fact, I'm doing it really to offer you a break and to have a sigh of kind of relief in a one last year if you so choose not to run again next year where you don't have to have the responsibilities of a vice chair. I'd like to offer that to you if I could.
I've spent the last two years saying this is my last year. So there was no part of me that thought I was going to do it this year, but when this all came up, I was willing to. But I am very happy to hand it over. So thank you for your comments.
And I just want to say with the new charter, the rules and policy, with the term being different, that changed the terms also of how many years somebody could, could run. That was one of the things that was, so, but I do understand because last year you were rather adamant about not wanting to have to do it. And so I think it's wonderful that you're stepping up to the plate to be respectful of what Stephanie wanted. But I think also I'd like to put, I think you've done a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Any other discussions about, well, the, I guess now the nomination that's on the floor? Okay. So then I would ask, there's only one nomination, I guess, on the floor, so I would ask for a vote. All those in favor of the nomination of Ed Zahousky as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So the, the election of the new vice chair is...
We get to do the ritual changing of the chairs.
Right now?
And I'll just say that I'm very sad to see you go. I've been happy over here with my guys on each side.
Those are dream thorns.
Well, thank you.
I haven't sat here in years.
This feels weird.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I had a feeling she wanted to accept the nomination.
Okay, fine. Okay. Thank you. Well, I, this was, all of this was a bit, was a surprise to me all the way around, so.
Me too.
I wasn't quick enough to get my phone out and capture that. I sat here for a long time before I sat over there. Was that actually her right place?
So we've had a slight rearrangement of the seating. Congratulations. And so we'll now move on. The next item is the setting of the annual meeting schedule, which I believe we've done. Is there, are there any changes to that?
No, no. It's as is.
So that still remains the same. The next item are subcommittee assignments. And I wanted to say that under the charter, the chair has now been given the role of making the committee assignments. But I did want to respect the process that you've had in the past of the vice, the elected vice chair really kind of helping to lead that process. So what I asked, I asked the vice chair to work with me and to, and to collect the information from you and to make recommendations to me about the, the subcommittees. And so these assignments that I'd be announcing reflect that process that you've done every year. So on the Budget and Property Committee, Mr. Zahousky, Ms. Pick, and Mr. Born. On the Rules and Policy Committee, Ms. Minnick, Ms. DeValle, and Mr. Moore. On the Curriculum Committee, Mr. Flynn, Mr. Schefflow, and Mr. Meyer. On the Negotiating Committee, Ms. Pick and Mr. Meyer. The rep to the Collaborative, Ms. Minnick. Our parliamentarian is Mr. Meyer. Our Legislative Liaison is Mr. Born. Our representative to the Northampton Prevention Coalition is Ms. DeValle. The Sped PAC Liaison is Mr. Flynn. The representative to the Tech Committee is Mr. Schefflow. And then our representative to both the Northampton Education Foundation and to the Northampton Community Television Boards is Mr. Moore. And then, this is more of an ad hoc, but we recently formed the New Start Time Committee, and Mr. Moore and Ms. DeValle are serving on that. So those are the subcommittee assignments. And we'll put those in writing and have those updated on the website.
Conference Committee?
What's that? Oh, I'm sorry. The Conference Committee, which I guess I skipped over. Yeah, that would be Mr. Meyer, Ms. DeValle, and Mr. Flynn on the Conference Committee with the school, with the city council. Thank you for catching that. And again, thank you to Ms. Pick for her help in putting that together. So that concludes the organizational portion of the meeting. And now we'll move into the public comment session. And there's one speaker signed up, Stephanie Grimaldi. And we'll just ask you to state your name and address for the record, and I'll keep a three-minute timer here.
Please do. I haven't got any sense of time. Stephanie Grimaldi, 42 Platinum Circle in Florence. I'm a parent of an eighth grader, a fifth grader, and possibly a kindergarten student, and that's why I'm here. I've heard discussions around town that there is a proposal on the table to implement a tuition for kindergarten as part of reducing the extraordinary shortfall that I'm aware of. I also know that the schools have been cut dramatically year after year after year, and we've kind of gotten to the point where really hard decisions need to be made. And I think that that's a separate conversation because I think that's a bigger picture, and we really need to think about how the schools are funded generally. But I'm really here just about the tuition for kindergarten. I'm also an educator. I've been a public school educator for over 20 years. And so I have a couple of personal comments about it and a couple of professional comments about it. One is, it feels kind of unfair to me that there is an idea that closing the gap is going to sit on the shoulders of a very, very small segment of the students, of the population those parents are going to pay. And there are also a large number of those parents who are not probably aware of this even being on the table because they do not yet have kids in the system. The other thing is, this morning, as I was listening to NPR, I was listening to our president speak of the benefits of early child education. And by going to our state-manded half-day kindergarten, you're really going to have to think about how that academic focus stays within those 2.5 hours, and that the tuition part of the day really becomes enhancements or extracurriculars or specialists. I think that's going to cause a lot of scheduling changes for the, scheduling challenges for the elementary schools. I also think that in the long term, you're going to see a decrease in the achievement of our students in the later grades because we know that a very solid early childhood education yields great benefit as kids move through the system. So I ask you to proceed with that idea with great caution and great thought and great reflection on what it means for the parents of those children and for the reputation of the Northampton Public Schools going forward. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in the public comment session? Okay. So we now move on to announcements, and I believe Mrs. Minnick has an announcement.
I was just going to let you know that Stephanie is a former member of the school council. Is that, did she just walk out?
Yep.
Oh, I think she's a former school member of the, are you a current or former school council member?
I am a JAMK School Council member currently, and I'm a former Ryan Bros School Council member.
Thank you.
I get, like, I get schools, and I'm an involved parent, but hey! I have to take care of that for you all.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to make that point, that she was also on a school council.
Thank you for that announcement. Is there another, any other announcements by members of the school committee? Oh, sorry.
I have two. The first is that I received an invitation from NEF for us to consider whether or not we were going to enter a team into the Spelling Bee that is on March 27th. And I would certainly hope that we would. That's something that we've been supporting for as long as I can remember. It's $250 for a team. Generally, we've all divided that up and shared that and put forth three members to go and spell for us. I don't think we have to name the three members right now, but we, I think we should make a decision about whether or not we're going to do that so that we can let them know to put our name on the, on the list of Spelling Bee teams. So that's an announcement, but I think that that's a decision that we need to make before the end of the night.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to do that now or enter New Business, or...
I suppose we don't, we may want to wait till New Business if we want to have a discussion of it because it's not really during this part.
And the second announcement that I want to make is in no way correlated to the decision that got made here about the vice chairship. But I would like to announce that this is my 12th and final year on the school committee. I'm saying early that I will not be running again next fall. And I'm saying that now so that people in Ward Five can start thinking about whether or not this is something that they want to do. And if anybody has any questions about it, I'd be happy to speak with them and meet with, meet with anybody who is interested. It's a huge commitment, but it's the most wonderful commitment you can make in Northampton as far as I'm concerned. I really love this. I started when my daughter was in kindergarten. She's graduating from high school this year. And it's, it's time for new, new blood to take Ward Five over. So I'm giving plenty of notice for Ward Five people to start thinking about who's next.
Are there any other announcements? Hearing none, I would then move into recommended actions. And we have tonight the consent agenda. The items that are on that consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes of your Thursday, December 13th, 2012, school committee meeting. There are also two contracts. The first is the Business Manager's Employment Contract. And the second item is the Heinemann Book Company Contract for $5,761.80. There's also a field trip, some field trip requests. We've got the NHS Academic Team Field Trip to Atlanta, Georgia. That's May 24th through May 27th, 2013. And that is organized by Ms. Rolick. JFK Latin Trip to the Metropolitan Museum of Art in New York City, May 24th, 2013. Mr. DeLu is the, is the person in charge of that trip. So that, those are all the items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Approve.
Okay.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay. I would actually ask for a roll call vote on tonight's consent agenda, please. I'd like to ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Downey Meyer?
Aye.
Ms. Lisa Minnick?
Yes.
Mr. Howard Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Stephanie Pick?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Shelfo?
Yes.
Mr. Ed Zahousky?
Yes.
Mayor David Darkwitz?
No.
Mr. Alden Born?
Yes.
Ms. Plutavall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excellent. So the consent agenda is adopted. Okay. We'll now move into the reports and recommendations. And I don't see our student representative tonight, so we will, we will, Valentine's Day. We will move on to a report by JFK Principal Leslie Wilson on the progress of the JFK eighth-grade math curriculum. And I would recognize Ms. Wilson and her team.
Lot of smart math people there.
Sorry, did we want to have the teachers who were giving the field trips speak about their field trips at all? No? Okay.
They were only here, there were questions.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Could you also just introduce the folks who are with you? Great. Excellent.
So this is the vertical math team, and I think we're all here, which is terrific. And I think that really speaks to who they are. And I just need to say that it's been a privilege to work with the vertical math team, and we all work together to implement the new math pathway. On the agenda, it says that it's eighth grade. Actually, we're in the beginning stages of implementing the new pathway, and the changes have been in seventh grade this year, and will then legalize eighth grade extras. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. But the conversations that have been happening about math and instruction and assessment and really about students, exceptional. And it's just been a privilege to work with them. So I'm going to...
You want to introduce yourself, or? Yeah, we might as well have a break to introduce ourselves. This is Ely Edinson.
Hello.
Eighth-grade math teacher at JFK.
And I'm Beth Adams. I'm a high school math teacher, and I teach ninth and eleventh graders.
I'm Rachel Staveley-Hale. I'm a high school math teacher at NHS, and I'm Department Chair.
Kathy Adams, eighth grade math, and I'm Department Chair.
My name is Sharon Deal. I'm here at JFK, Special Ed Education, seventh grade.
Hi, I'm Finn Levy. I'm a seventh-grade math teacher here at JFK.
All right. And so I'm really going to turn it over to the vertical math team to give you some information about the implementation of the new math pathway. I do want to say that we've heard lots of positive feedback from parents, from teachers, from students. It's really been really well done so far, and everybody's working really hard at it. So I'm going to turn it over to Tim, I think, to begin with, and Sharon?
Yeah. So you guys are a lot calmer than the group I'm used to presenting to. So, once again, I'm a seventh-grade math teacher here, so this is my sixth year at JFK. And the biggest change for me is this is the first year I've had heterogeneous classes. And while it was a challenge at first, I'm starting to become a lot more comfortable with it. And I think the kids are adopting, it's what the kids are used to, so it doesn't, it's not a big change for them. A couple of things that have, I've noticed that have been working really well are, we used to be broken up into three levels. The maybe lower 20% of the kids were in a class called Applied Math. Maybe the middle 60% were in what we called Middle School Math. And then maybe the top 20% in seventh grade were in a seventh and eighth grade math class. So now that they're all in one group, a couple of things I've noticed that have been great is the kids who are kind of at the higher end in the applied classes, I think it's really nice for them to be mixed in with students of all abilities. They get to participate in conversations, that rich conversations that wouldn't have happened in their applied classes. They get to see kind of other, better examples of student work from their peers than they did in those applied classes. Also, I think it's good that we're not pushing the high-end kids through seventh and eighth grade math in one year. It's a lot of curriculum. And from what I've heard from the high school folks, when those kids would get to honors classes, some gaps kind of had developed when they pushed through seventh and eighth grade math in one year. And, you know, the new frameworks, it's big about teaching to mastery. And I feel we can really teach to mastery more with these high-end kids and challenge them the way they need to be challenged. I think in the past, in the seven, eight math class, they had to push through so much curriculum. It was more about getting through curriculum and not really challenging the kids. So I think they're getting appropriately challenged here. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about how we differentiate. Did you guys get the handouts? There's a game board. I'll talk about that first. So this is, if you'll notice, it's double-sided. Basically, it's, have you guys all heard of Connect Four before? Basically, they play Connect Four on this board by adding the numbers below the board. So they have two paper clips that can be placed on any of the numbers on the bottom of the board. And basically what they do is when the two clips are placed on the bottom, on those numbers, they add those two clips and cross off the sum on the grid. And the goal is to get four in a row. So if you look at, one side has integers, one side has fractions. So all the kids kind of start by playing the game with the integers on it. That's the easier of the two games. And some kids move on and play the game with the fractions on the backside. Those would be your higher-end kids. While some other kids will just stick with the side that has integers on it. So that's one example of how we differentiate a lesson. There's another handout you'll see there. I think it's behind there. And so this came from an activity we did with multiplying fractions. And so with this class assignment, all the kids did the top half of it. And the kids really move at different speeds, so the kids who are really fluent with this would then move on to the bottom half of it, which is kind of an extension where they learn to simplify expressions where you're multiplying fractions. So, you know, everyone kind of does the top half, and for those kids that are ready for the next challenge, it's built into that form. Another nice thing about those activities, you'll see that there's a riddle at the top, and then at the bottom of the page, there's a little place where they write in letters. So these assignments here really lend themselves nicely to students self-checking their work, which is kind of helpful when kids are working on different things. Just to talk a little bit about how we assess kids, I generally give two or three different assessments, varying levels of difficulty when I give tests, and kind of gauge, you know, what kids have mastered, and try and give the kids an assessment they can experience some success on that appropriately challenges them. And another thing that's been key is planning and co-teaching. So Sharon Deal is a special ed teacher on our team, and we've been spending a lot of time kind of before school talking about what we're going to be doing the next few weeks, what we're doing that day, what she can do to help her kids out, learning strategies. So we took a release day in October. It was the other seventh-grade math teacher, myself, Sharon, and the other seventh-grade special ed teacher. And we basically talked about what our next two units were going to be, kind of mapped those out for the special ed teachers, and gave them some suggestions on how they could help support their kids and how they could help their kids succeed, pre-teaching. And, you know, I'm going to let Sharon talk a little bit more about that, if you want to jump in.
Sure. So one of the, one of the key things, I think, is time for us to implement the inclusion model. And time is like, we don't have a lot of time to do that often. We have team time. And that has a lot of different components to it within the Green Revolution. We have parent conferences, IEP meetings. So team time, Tim and I have really been working hard before school, during school, after school, whatever we can, and during some of the team times that we do have, to kind of set up lessons that will support some of my students as well as the high-end students. And we've also worked together during team time or before school on talking about what the skills my kids will need in order to find success. For instance, we were fortunate enough to have that release day, which was great because we could talk about the next two units we were going to look at. And this is my first year in seventh grade. I've done eighth grade and sixth grade, so doing the CMP model. So it's a little bit different for me, but Tim was able to explain to me the next two units during this time. We were able to look at the common core. We were able to look at scope and sequence, and then kind of map out what the basic skills my students would need to possess in those classrooms in order to find success. So then during my learning strategies class, I have a learning strategies class that I teach one day, I mean, every day for 45 minutes. Usually a component of that class, I'll pre-teach or reteach concepts that he's going to go over. But I also, from meeting with Tim, we were doing a comparing and scaling unit on fraction, decimal, percent. So what I needed to do was really look at where the kids were at, my group was at, in terms of equivalent fraction, decimal, percent, reducing, solving proportions, and then try to provide them with pre-teaching or reteaching lessons to support. So when they went in the classroom, they weren't being thrown in with content they didn't quite understand. And so that's been really essential for Tim and I to get together. We also were able to get together about another unit, and this was on percent of a number, sales tax tips, and, and sale price. And so I was able to create lessons after Tim and I got together so that my kids would understand what was going to be happening that day or the next week. And working with Tim has been great. We also, in addition, had a, had a professional development. And Tim worked with his counterpart creating some benchmark assessments, which will be great for us to continue to create those benchmark assessments because that will help inform instruction and create lessons that, where we see the gaps, to help us kind of go back and reteach some concepts maybe from those benchmark assessments, once we get the data from those benchmark assessments. Also, on a professional development day, Tim and I were able to sit down together and look at the MCAS graphic organizer. My kids all get a graphic organizer for the MCAS according to their IEP. So we were able to kind of look at what needs to be on that graphic organizer so that we can get it approved by DOE. So, you know, really the essential things for... So, you know, really, the essential things for the special ed kids in those classes are for Tim and I to have more time to do differentiated instruction. That would be great. And to also maybe think about having our kids, or my kids, all of our kids, have some more remedial math programs. So that the basic skills that they're coming in with, there's another place they can get some of those filled besides my learning strategies class. We work really hard in there, but I have to cover math, science, social studies, and language arts in that forty-five minute block. So, you know, I, I just want to thank, you know, thank you guys for giving us that release day because that did give us, you know, a lot of time to spend together to come up with some ideas about how we're going to pre-teach and reteach some concepts.
Take you with more?
I didn't have anything else yet.
Should we talk about where we're going now?
Sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to have a couple, thank you.
So just a couple other things to point out. One of the things that we have been talking about are enhancements in safety nets. And I think that we're really embedding those things within our curriculum. And in my observations of the math classes, one of the things that strikes me is the flexibility within the heterogeneously grouped classroom, where students on any given day, with their strengths and maybe the areas where they're struggling a little bit, can be grouped very easily, much more easily than in a way where we were when we were leveled. So I think that's a real advantage, that we do have that flexibility. If I'm really strong in one skill but not in another, that's something that the teachers have found through their formative and summative assessments. And we're using that model through learning centers and differentiating in the classroom. So I think that's been something that's really been striking me in my observations in the classroom. We are going to move on a little bit now to the professional development. Do you want to speak a little bit? Anybody? Yeah, Eli participated in some of the professional development. I'll go through just the list with you, but if Eli wants to speak about a couple opportunities, especially the MEMZ pre-AP and some of the facets work has been really, really terrific.
Yeah. So I'm just going to briefly speak to some of the professional development that my colleagues and I have been working on to try to make this transition as smooth as possible for us and to make this work, because it's a big transition for us. Maybe not as much for the kids, but we're really trying to work as hard as we can to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students. The math, math and science initiative was kind of spearheaded by the state when these new Common Core curriculum came down. It started to push some of the stuff that they were asking kids to do to lower levels. So we kind of had to restructure our curriculum. And in order to do that, we needed materials to kind of make that happen. So that training is kind of giving us this, the actual tangible materials to bring to the classroom that do these differentiated lessons for us. They're scaffolded in a way that they build in supports for the kids who kind of struggle with it. They give you a little concrete foundational knowledge of the, you know, concept. And then they build to those higher kind of extension and enrichment levels for the kids who are able to go to that next level. And the nice thing about the MEMZ stuff is it's on a continuum. I have the learning progression for, from sixth grade all the way up through high school level. So if kids want to go ahead and work at, you know, higher levels of stuff, if they're that motivated and they have the ability to do that, we now have the resources to get that done because we're being trained in activities that kind of adhere to those sort of things. The Common Core Practices Workshop that Tim and I attended last summer is kind of the same deal. There's like seven core principles that come with this Common Core curriculum. And this training was basically trying to give us activities and way to structure our classroom to kind of best, you know, meet the different needs of our students. And this was designed for teachers in a heterogeneous classroom. So that's what those activities are kind of designed to cater to. The facets training is something I was involved in for two years. And there's teachers in the building who I think have been doing it longer than that. It's basically training around formative assessment specifically geared towards mathematics, which is something that's actually new in the United States. We're kind of one of the first schools to be doing this, was kind of piloting this research for the rest of the nation. This is a national foundation that's running this. But basically, it's, again, it's ways to kind of structure our classroom, organize our room so that we're meeting needs of our individual students. It's also working with the inclusion teachers. I think almost all of them are a part of this as well. So it gives us ways to interact with our co-teachers and be able to build in those extra supports in the classroom with the co-teaching model that is, you know, that's a difficult thing to do. So we're working really hard on different strategies and methods to try to really support the kids who need it as well as obviously catering to the kids we're working at and above grade level. And certainly, we spend our professional workdays, a good deal of it is spent in department time. Grade-level departments, all together as a math department, we bounce ideas off each other. We ask, you know, each other what's working, what's not. The seventh grade teachers have really been, you know, kind of telling us what's working well for them and what we can expect next year and how we can best design our classrooms to aid in this transition as best that we can. And we'll also be taking some release days in the future, myself as well as some members of my team, to continue to work on the new eighth grade curriculum and how we're going to best supplement it with what we have and continue to work as hard as we can to get this done.
And that's really the next phase is that it's this year, seventh graders are the first group who are really participating in this change. When they're eighth graders next year is where we're going to have that first sort of rolling down of the Algebra I-A content into eighth grade. So what we're looking at coming up is a release day and some summertime work where we can get together as a vertical team and do the work of actually taking those I-A pieces and fitting them into the eighth grade curriculum so that we have that curriculum set up with plenty of support and also plenty of enrichment for the kids who want it and need it. So that's pretty much the next big phase. Oh, well, and the test, I guess that's the other piece, is that in addition, in the summertime, in addition to creating the curriculum, we're going to work on refining the eighth grade test, which we're looking at piloting. So we're looking at taking a release day in March to take our sort of version of the eighth grade assessment right now and refine it and get it to a place where we feel really good about piloting it this year with our, our eighth graders for the first time.
I think one of the key pieces to the professional development too is the vertical math team meetings that we've been having. But also, there'll be a joint Northampton High School and JFK math department meeting coming up the end of February. And we just had a sample of, I think, what the conversations are going to be at that meeting when we had a couple of our math teachers here join this group last week. And I couldn't stop them talking about what's happening at the high school and what's happening at the middle school and how really great this whole implementing this pathway and the new Common Core has been going and how interested they are in that. The development of the benchmark assessments too, I think that's just a big piece in this. We are developing by departments here, grade-level common benchmark assessments. So all of the students in seventh and eighth grade, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade will be taking three or four common assessments. And that will help us inform our instruction and also do this a little vertically across the entire grade level as, I mean horizontally across the entire grade level as well as vertically to inform instruction in that direction. So that's a big piece of the work that we're doing now. I think that probably is an update that is helpful. If you have questions, we're here to answer questions. I really want to say that-
To choose, Mr. Moore?
Two questions. The first one, I'm not sure who it's for, but, you know, the formative assessments, what does that look like in terms of, how much time does it take? And, and, you know, what's the, what's it look like in a classroom? Is it just like a quiz, a test?
Good question. No, it's, it's actually an entire teaching cycle. It starts with the teacher, goes to the student, and comes back after the teacher, which deals with questioning techniques, student feedback, teacher feedback, having direct, clear learning goals and intentions. Students kind of become aware of what they need to do to become successful and kind of designing activities to have them kind of be a little bit more aware of their learning process and taking some, a little more responsibility for their learning.
So the, so when you say formative assessment, it sounds as though, that's why I was saying, it sounds like it's saying like a test, but it's more of a process?
Yeah, it's, it's, exactly. Yeah, summative assessment would be more of a test. Formative assessment is like an ongoing process where you're kind of constantly checking in with students, where they're at in the learning process to kind of redirect as you go rather than just check at the end.
Right. And then I guess my second question actually is sort of, then it would be, the formative assessment of this whole program, which you're working on now. The big, the big question when we started with it last year, I mean, you know, this, this last fall, was whether or not we would end up with as many ninth graders, at least as many ninth graders at the same, at the upper end as we were with having the split into the advanced math class. And so what's our formative assessment say? Is this, are we on track to be able to do that, do you think?
I would say yes, and I, I mean, what we're hearing from Tim is that a lot of those kids who would traditionally have been in our applied class are finding more success now in these heterogeneous classes than they might have before. They're being exposed to a more sophisticated level of mathematical dialogue. They're being exposed to more, you know, sophisticated mathematical concepts. So the, the hope is that as we're sort of bringing more kids into the fold, that once they reach us at the high school, they're going to be ready to move into more advanced courses.
Right. So I guess that, that, that formative assessment will be ongoing as, as next year plays out and as, as these students end up in the high school and seeing if they're, if we end up with, what it was before was whatever the, the advanced math class, sort of taking whatever it was, you know, geometry, starting with geometry. If we end up seeing enrollments similar to what we have now, then we'll, that's one, whatever, sort of one benchmark we'll have.
Yeah. And this, this spring, we're going to pilot the eighth grade math test. It won't really serve the same role it ultimately will because we're not that far along in the cycle yet. And ultimately, that's going to be the test that determines if students are ready for one semester of Algebra I at the high school rather than the two semester version. And we don't expect them all to be yet because we haven't prepared, maybe eighth grade be what it needs to be yet.
Right.
But that's what we're headed towards.
That's what we're-
And the goal would be that in two, three years, what we're seeing is, you know, just as many students going into geometry as we've got now. But additionally, a bunch of students taking one semester of algebra instead of two semesters of algebra. And that's really the critical piece. Because by having the, the one semester of algebra rather than the full year of algebra, it means that students can move courses forward and get to AP Calc by their junior year. Whereas currently, the only kids who are able to get to AP Calc by their junior year were those kids who did algebra here at JFK.
Or they could take some other course, the second semester or the other semester in their freshman year. Some non-math course.
Oh, exactly. It opens up a spot in their schedule. Exactly.
And also frees up the schedule for the eighth graders a whole lot.
Yes, right as well.
Gives the teachers more flexibility in the high school too. If Algebra I's becoming one, one block, one semester as opposed to two semesters, that could be, I mean, you guys were estimating maybe five periods, five more periods of math that math teacher would be free to teach another course.
New elective, smaller sections of our AP and honors courses that are overloaded, so.
Well, and, and the two semester version of, of algebra, hopefully those sections could be smaller so that those students who needed more attention could get it.
Get it.
We shall see.
Right. And, and the whole process is about collecting data. And that's what we're doing over the next two or three years to see how this, you know, really is rolling out for our students and focusing on that.
Mr. Meyer?
I had a question about how differentiated instruction interacts with assessment. Because you have students working in different groups and there are different mastery levels. And they may be enjoying the same level of success in terms of problem solving, but at two distinctly different levels. And then you have them come to the summative assessment, which may be a common assessment. Or you also have to place them on a grading scale, which also is meant to be universal. And I'm just, you know, obviously, this is something that you have to deal with. I'm just wondering, strategies and what, how the team is, is trying to get a common philosophy to apply across grades?
So Tim actually had three tests that we were looking at today on the same content. And he can talk about that. So we're also differentiating assessment. With the common assessments, I think we're using those. And those will be the same assessment at the end of two units of the invest, of the connected math to really determine where all the kids are at that point. But within the classroom, Tim's differentiating his, his assessment right now. So he can talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, basically, they may have the same objectives, like certain standards they're trying to meet, and they're just meeting them at different levels. Oftentimes, it's just manipulating the numbers. For example, in working with proportional relationships, we did a mini-unit. Part of one of these assessments was manipulating recipes, you know, tripling a recipe. Or say a recipe serves four people. Maybe you want to serve seven people or ten people. We might give that to the higher functioning kids where the kids that are at a lower level, we might just say, you know, how much of each ingredient do we need if we double the recipe? So part of it's just how the numbers are manipulated. You know, I generally have the same objectives written on the board for the kids. It could be fairly general. You know, one could be, be able to calculate the sale price of an item. Maybe for some kids, it's a real easy percent to work with, it's twenty-five percent off. Maybe for some other kids, it's thirty-five percent off. So they're still kind of working on the same skill. They're still finding a sale price. Some are just doing it with more difficult numbers. So that's one example of how we kind of manipulate assessments. Oftentimes, it's just changing numbers around.
And I would say that that kind of differentiation is the exact same kind of differentiation that we do with assessment at the high school.
Now, but just in terms of, if you're, you know, success provides motivation and engagement. And so it's a positive. But then you also, if kids are, you know, lack of success can also provide some motivation to work harder, to achieve more, to, you know, try to reach that next level. And I guess that there's a tension there in that if you're differentiating the assessment, then someone who's in, let's say, a lower level of mastery might say, well, I'm, I'm good. I got, you know, ninety percent of this assessment. But you recognize as a teacher that they could be moving on to application mastery or extending even further. So I'm just wondering, how, how's that, how's that structured in the program so that we make sure that that's happening for our students?
There's a lot of observation involved in that. I'm feeling how what kids can really do, a lot of it kind of comes through just looking over their shoulders, conversations with them. And so maybe at the start of the year, a kid, you know, you kind of build their confidence. Maybe they're not doing as well. So if you give them assessment at three different levels, maybe they're starting at the lowest level. Then as they, they start experiencing success, you kind of up the ante for them. And maybe they take the middle level exam instead of the lowest level exam. So we kind of observe that throughout the year, make sure we're not cheating them in any way by kind of giving them any kind of modified work. And really trying to appropriately challenge them, make sure we're pushing them while not overwhelming them. So a lot of that's done through observation, conversation with the students.
And I think also it's important to note that, you know, what, a kid may struggle with one unit and have great success in another unit. So perhaps a kid has a really, you know, weakness with fractions. But when they move on to another unit, the kid is really soaring. So perhaps they took the lowest level assessment in the fractions unit, but then they're taking the highest level assessment in the next unit. So I think there's some sort of balancing out that happens there too.
And I just want to say too, one of the things that's happening is the math department, as well as all the departments in, at JFK, we're looking at student work as a practice. So we have student work exemplars. And we're looking at student work as a team and as a department. So I think that's a really helpful way also to really take a look at what students are doing and how we're challenging them.
Thank you. I think it's just amazingly exciting to see a vertical team and getting so much thought to instruction and evaluation. And having also, I think, the time away from the classroom to come together is just critical. And I hope we continue to support that as a school committee.
I have one other thing too. Since we've been being monthly, it's great to be able to hear from them. You know, here's what you guys are doing that's working. Here's what maybe you could do to support the kids even more. Here's what you could do to prepare kids for honors classes. And, you know, I'm sure when we're telling them what we're doing, it allows them to really plan their instruction.
Absolutely. Yeah. It's just been such a great experience.
Speck?
I just, I wanted to echo, it's so wonderful to see middle school and high school teachers working together for our kids because, you know, they, their, our levels aren't vacuums. It's not, you know, an elementary vacuum, a middle school vacuum, and a high school vacuum. The kids go right through. And it's just, it's wonderful to hear this. And you all sound so thoughtful about how you're approaching it and so collaborative. And I just wanted to acknowledge that. But I wanted to ask, last year, when, when this was all being presented, we had a number of parents come to us who were very concerned. Are you still hearing from those parents or have their concerns been put to rest for the most part?
I think that for the, I, I've heard some positive feedback from some of the parents that were concerned, which is really terrific, and it speaks to what they've been doing in the classroom and the work that we've been doing to prepare. There's, we continually look at students and figure out what's going to work best for them. And it's really important that the students advocate for themselves and that the parents advocate for the students. So if we do hear from, from parents, it's a, you know, a collaborative process trying to solve the problem. So I, you know, typically in a year, I will hear from a few parents. It's no more this year than it has been in any year, to be honest with you. I think it may be less. But there are exceptional kids. And we need to problem solve together to make sure we're meeting the needs of those students. But to be honest with you, no. It's, it's, there's been some positive feedback as well as some working-
I would imagine with this, in a year or two, that it's going to be well-known that the, the kids' needs are being met. This program is working the way it's intended to. So, good, thank you.
Mr. Self?
And I just wanted to close by saying thank you for the work you do every day. But also thank you for being here tonight and for answering all of these questions. I think you hit all of the frequently asked questions and did so in a very thoughtful and intelligent way. I also want to thank you and remind people at home who are listening that this was not an idea that you came up with one summer and implemented. This is something you've thought about, worked on, and carefully structured the implementation over a couple of years. And so I really appreciate that thoughtful, long-range vision that you brought to this implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next report that we'll be receiving is a principal entry plan, structured interviews. This is for, from Bridge Street School principal Beth Choquette. Principal Choquette.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. I'm very excited to be here. I'd like to start out first of all by saying what a privilege it is to be able to work at Bridge Street Elementary School. An amazing group of teachers, students, families, the Ward Three community. And it's really a privilege to be able to work with all those folks. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share with you tonight what I call my structured interviews. Coming in last summer after I was hired, I really wanted to find a way to get to know the school before I actually started the process of working there. So I wanted to do what I called structured interviews with the faculty and staff and as many parents as I could get to come in and participate in this. And those structured interviews- And those structured interviews involved the same four questions that I ask people. I wanted to know what they thought their strengths were at Bridge Street Elementary School, what they thought the challenges were. I always like to ask, I call it my dream question. If money wasn't an issue, what would be the one thing you'd like to see at Bridge Street? And then how I can best serve and support them as their principal. And so what you see here on your first page, and I apologize, there's two packets that aren't in color when you get to the pictures. But if you look on, maybe with someone next to me, they were lucky to get the color. But, so you see the top four, when I put together the data, the top four answers that both faculty and staff and parents gave me. The challenges of Bridge Street School was something I was truly concerned about. So I made that as one of my school improvement goals as part of my evaluation process. And the goal, you can see on your second page at the top, the gist of the goal was to take those top four challenges at Bridge Street and figure out a way and take the action steps to turn them into our strengths. And so what I'm going to do tonight is go through and talk to you about some of the action steps we have taken already to start to turn those challenges into our strengths, and some of our action steps we're planning on implementing as we go into the next school year, 2013-14. The first challenge, the one that came up the most, was a consistent behavior plan. And I wanted to begin to implement the Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports Program at Bridge Street, which, there's a picture in there of you, for you, of a red, yellow, and a green chart, and our teachers added the orange. Every classroom in our school has that. The cafeteria has it, the playground has it, every setting of the school has that chart where the students are. And as you can see on the bottom, the green spot, there's clothespins with students' names. And during the course of the day in the classroom, cafeteria, wherever it may be, based on behaviors or what is going on in the classroom, those names can move up the chart. And the idea of it is to get rid of the time that a teacher spends discussing behaviors with students and try to keep them more on task with the learning. And then creating that visual for students to see, oh, my name just moved to the yellow. What do I need to do to fix that? Go back to the green or, and hopefully not move to the orange or the red. So we implemented that system. I've also, on your next page, there is the new incident reports, which we did not have at Bridge Street, to create data to be able to follow patterns of certain students, to see if patterns were developing, and just to have a record of behaviors in the school. And also to have some accountability for these to go home, and parents to really see some behaviors that students may be exhibiting at the school. So we implemented that. And you also have in there, and I apologize, it might be a little blurry, the posters of what we call our four Rs, being respectful, responsible, reliable, and reasonable. And those are posted as well throughout the school. Our next steps for this challenge going into next year is to create a matrix around those four Rs. And what I mean by a matrix is having those four Rs posted in every setting of the school with items listed under each of the four Rs. What does it mean to be respectful in gymnasium? What does it mean to be responsible in gymnasium? What does it mean to be respectful in the ladies' room, the men's room? What does it mean to be respectful on the playground? And having a matrix for every setting of the building for students to really understand what those four Rs mean and what they mean in different settings of the school building. The second challenge came up around not enough staff. And when I say not enough staff, I talk about support staff. So being more of a money issue when it comes around staff, we had to be creative to think about, well, what are we going to do with the resources that we have to really help support our students? So we have implemented more inclusion with our resource staff, working within the classrooms, with the teachers, with their students that they work with. Providing more training for teachers in the co-teaching model. We have a couple of teachers who are trained at Bridge Street in the co-teaching model. And trying to provide more training for that in hopes to be able to implement that in the future. And using one of our resource room teachers, who will be working with their special ed students, who also have behavioral issues, and really providing a safe environment for those students where their needs can really be met, which we have also implemented. Next steps for next year, we would like to pilot flexible grouping for math and also begin to implement some co-teaching in the building with the staff that is trained. The third challenge on there was, of course, our Level Three status. One of the things I wanted to do when I first came to Bridge is to really create a positive environment for both faculty and staff and our students, as well as our parents and our community members that visit our school every day. I implemented weekly celebration to really stress the importance of community in our school, and we meet for about 15 minutes at nine o'clock every Thursday morning, and everybody is invited to attend. The classroom teachers, this was new to them, and they really stepped up to the plate. I've asked them all to sign up for a week so their students can present something they're working on in class. You know, today, we had a third grade class present a beautiful poem that they wrote around Valentine's Day and kindness. So it's a really wonderful thing, and it was new for them, and, you know, the kids love it. We get a ton of parents who come, and it's really a nice opportunity just to pull us all together as a school community and to kind of remember that we are all in this together, and we are a family. So we implemented that this year. I really focus on three big Rs, rigor, relevance, and relationships. A rigorous curriculum and instruction is really important. Relevance is best teaching practices and relationships. And I always put relationships first because I feel like if you don't have the relationship and the trust, the other two Rs aren't going to happen. So that's been a big focus, those three Rs with the, between myself and the staff this year. And trying to change the mindset to really have a focus on the mastery of our new standards. What are we doing to ensure that our students are mastering our new Common Core standards and are college and career ready? We have posted visual objectives, and at the elementary level, instead of using the word objectives, I like to call them ICANN statements. And when you walk into the classroom, you see those ICANN statements on the board. Even at the elementary level, it's important for students to know what they're going to be learning and why they're learning it, and why is it important in their world. And using more pre and post-assessments to really help inform and guide our instruction. And we've also started a book study, and the book study we're doing this year is Doug Limov's book, Teach Like a Champion, which I would recommend for anybody to read, even if you're not a teacher. It's a wonderful book. And what I really loved about our staff at Bridge Street is after our very first session of doing the first couple of chapters together, when I walked through the classrooms, teachers were already implementing some of these strategies, which is really great to see and see them embrace that. Our next steps for our third challenge, obviously, is to be out of the Level Three status, which is the goal. Continue the new things that we have implemented this year. Increase our data analysis and really looking at the data of student assessments. And just for all of us to remember that change does take time. And I constantly remind my staff of that because, you know, they're under a lot of stress, and it does take time, and I tell them, we will get there. The last challenge on there is not enough time to collaborate. I was told that a lot by teachers, that they just don't have time to collaborate. So I created a schedule that allowed for common planning time at least three times a week, that teachers are able to have that time together. I also implemented weekly grade level team meetings, where each grade level meets with me once a week. And I provided a consistent schedule for monthly staff meetings. They know that they are always the second Thursday of the month. And also during that time with my staff to provide valuable professional development and professional learning communities. And our next steps for this challenge for next year, going into next year, is to continue what we've started and to create a schedule that will also include our resource room teachers to be part of that common planning time, which is very difficult, but that's my summer project. So, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? Mrs.?
Not so much. Well, maybe one question, but also a comment. I love the relevance thing. How many, I mean, and anybody who's been around for very long has probably heard me say this before, but it's like, you know, is this going to be on the test? Why am I learning this? It's so, it's so wonderful to have somebody who has the mindset that they're, that they're teaching it because you need to know it, and the kids are learning it because it's interesting, and they want to know it without wondering, is it, am I going to be tested on it later? So thank you for that. That's great. I'm curious about the incident report.
Yeah.
Did, did these things come from your parent, your handbook? What do you call it?
Yeah, in part with the handbook and in part with my experience from the, my previous district, we brought these in. One of the things that teachers were really concerned about is that we had no documentation process to really look at patterns of students, to kind of support them better. So, yes, it was looked at in combination with the handbook.
Okay. And then maybe the last question, you said not enough time to collaborate, so you've made common planning time?
Common planning time and the grade level team meetings for teachers.
Okay. The common planning time, who's doing that?
The grade level. So, so we have two teachers per grade level, so they are meeting together. And the next step for that is to be able to involve our resource room teachers into that process, which is a scheduling difficulty, but we'll do it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Meyer?
So in terms of the Level Three, have you gotten feedback from the teachers as far as implementing things that they have gleaned from the data analysis and whether that time spent in the data analysis is, is changing their instruction in a way that they see it?
Yes, absolutely. They feel like there's more of a focus. You know, when we talk about the data now and the objectives or ICANN statements, they, a lot of the feedback that I have gotten from them is they finally feel like there's a focus, and they're looking at students and looking at their work and changing their teaching practices and readjusting where they need to based on that data and looking at the needs of the students. I've got very positive feedback on that. Our data team right now at Bridge is, it's a large data team. We really strive to have all of the grade levels involved, to get the perspective from preschool all the way up to the fifth grade together and share those ideas. The hope for next year is to have some sub-data groups to look at assessment as well and provide training for that. But a lot of positive feedback on that and how it's really helped change their instruction and their focus in the classroom.
I'd just like to make a comment. Thank you for being here tonight and for doing this for the school committee. I just want to say that your focus on academics, your leadership, your commitment, your creative ideas that you've brought to Bridge Street is exactly what Bridge Street needed. And I held my listening session a couple days ago at Bridge Street, and the teachers are absolutely thrilled at the ideas you've brought and your commitment to implementing these new ideas. And I think that Bridge Street is really on the right track, thanks to you and the teachers. Very well done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that completes the two reports. The next item, I will be having a report from Jennifer Towler on our school choice program, and then we are required to take a vote regarding our continued participation in the school choice program.
I'll get it started. It's time for our annual vote on school choice. And last year, we did this, I presented the information to you, but I thought it would be nice on Valentine's Day for Jennifer Towler to come and be at the meeting. She does such a great job in her role as registrar, keeping track of the data, interacting with parents, creating a very welcoming feel to the office and the registration. She is the kind of person who's on top of every detail in the office and is always forward-thinking, bringing me new pieces of data before I even think that I may need them. And so I wanted her to be here tonight to answer your questions, to present some of her work, and also to receive the recognition she deserves for the hard work she does every day.
So there was some information in the packets, which we can kind of go over. But there just had some historical information about school choice program. Northampton Public Schools has been accepting non-resident students since 1997. We started with high school students and then moved on adding elementary after that. The state school choice limit is $5,000 per student, and the special education costs are paid in full by the sending district. And the revenue that we derive from the school choice is an important factor in funding our schools. Right now, the data that we had was from January, and we had 2,733 students district-wide, and of that total, 222, which is approximately 8% of our school choice students. So the attached sheets, the first one is the school choice and resident summary that has each school broken down by resident students versus school choice students. Do we have any questions on that one at all? And then the next two sheets, the first one is the incoming students, and this is a five-year breakout of how many we've had. So this is the number of school choice students, which has ranged from 185 to our current number, which is 222. And those numbers have remained fairly steady over the last five years. And then the bottom chart shows the number of Northampton students who are choosing to attend other public schools. And these numbers have ranged from 64, that's an estimate for this year, to a high of 85, and that was in 2009, 2010. And these numbers are pretty typical in terms of having approximately three times as many students incoming as we have outgoing. And then the last sheet.
I'm going to pause for just a moment. I think it's important to note, once again, that last year, we put in a new process of communication with families. We expedited the communication so families knew earlier that they were on, they were accepted or they were on the waiting list. We opened more seats for families, and we increased the number of students that came into our district. My opinion is that I believe we may have maximized the number of students we can bring in. I believe we still had some seats open for families and available. So I just wanted to make note of that to the school committee, that we did that last year. We did bring in more students, which, of course, brought in more revenue. But it's not something we can keep doing and say, well, let's bring in another 100 school choice kids. They're not there. We've cleared our waiting list. Do you want to agree to that or comment on it?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And we do always have a higher demand in certain grades than we have spaces. And then the grades that we sometimes have more space, we don't have a demand for. So we typically have more applicants at the kindergarten level, sixth and seventh grade, and then at the high school at the ninth grade. So those incoming grades into the schools. And then the last sheet is just the sending and receiving districts, and this is an interesting breakdown that shows where our school choice students are coming from, with East Hampton, Holyoke, Hampshire Regional, and Hatfield, the four districts where we get the most students from. And then the bottom chart shows where our students, our resident students are attending. And those are Hatfield, Hampshire Regional, East Hampton, and Frontier Regional. And that's interesting because it's a little bit of a, kind of a game of Red Rover that goes on with students that move within the communities and wanting to stay at the school that they have been attending. So that's kind of a factor there. And again, those numbers are fairly steady over the last five years. And then I just wanted to make a note that the vote that you take annually always seems a little bit confusing, and I just wanted to clarify that when the school committee makes that vote, it's on the participation in the school choice program. To withdraw from participation means the school would be a sending district only, and a no vote means that you're both accepting and receiving students. And that's all okay. So, any questions?
Are there any questions, Jennifer? Okay. So I, yes?
I do have one. I'm curious, I'm just looking at the numbers in terms of who's going to which schools and who's coming from which schools. And I'm wondering if there's any thought about the numbers from East Hampton changing once their new school, their new high school is, when kids are coming from East Hampton, are they mostly coming in the early grades, or have they been coming for high school? Or do you have a sense of that?
Well, if you look at that breakdown, if you go across, it shows the elementary, middle, and high school students.
So that's when they're entering?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Or is that the students right, that's where they are?
As they are right now. That's our, the current population of students.
But it, so.
My question was more of, since when we have new kids coming in a given year, are they coming for the high school? And I'm wondering if that's going to change with East Hampton opening up its new high school. It's not an answer that I expect you to have. I'm just wondering if it's something that we need to be aware of.
I would, my comment on that, being one who works in East Hampton, I would not sp-
I would, my comment on that, being one who works in East Hampton, I would not speak negative about our district. But I would say in regards to school choice and what I've always seen it to be in its benefit is that if you're not happy with the educational institution within your city or town, the state has allowed for you to send your student to another place. I think that has great benefit because it doesn't necessarily mean the bricks and mortar are better in one town or another. It's the education. And so, when we bring in the amount of students we are bringing in from other districts, I think it's a testament to what we heard tonight as far as how we're working on curriculum and trying to, you know, bring up our student achievement and how we're working at doing those things. And although we're getting a multimillion dollar high school, which I will be very happy to work and teach in, it's what goes on within the building, which I really believe attracts families in or out of the district. So, if we get more students to stay in East Hampton, I hope it's because the education that we're offering to the kids is what brings and keeps them there and not just that we have a 40-plus million dollar new building to go and house the students in, so.
Mr. Meyer?
So, I just had a question. I mean, looking at the outgoing, East Hampton Public Schools and especially the elementary are an outlier. And I'm wondering, one thing we talked about in past years about school choice was, to what extent are we trying to determine why parents are leaving? Are we doing any kind of exit interviewing, if you will, of parents as they make another choice to try to find out what, you know, what is it that's motivating them? Is it maybe just that they moved from another town and they want to stay and they want to have their kids stay with that peer group? Or is there something distinctive about the educational opportunities at another school that's motivating it? And I'm just wondering whether we're doing that or whether that's maybe data that's just too difficult to collect at this point.
We're not doing it formally. I'd like to do it more systematically. That was one of our ideas last year when we talked about the director of development to do some exit interviews and gather that kind of data. However. Aaron's talked to Jennifer. Jennifer has anecdotal data, so if you care to share some of those ideas, you can, but it's up to you.
We have talked about collecting the data. It would be interesting. I mean, we do ask on the school choice forums why people want to come to our school, but we are not seeing why people are leaving the district. We have had some families come back to us that had been school choice out and they, you know, told me some of the reasons that they had initially left the district and it was probably five or six years ago and a lot of those families have come back to us. So, that's been a positive.
Yeah, and the Hatfield Public Schools, with the number being so high of the outbound and 24 of them being in the elementary, I know of a couple of them that are families that have moved and that would account for a couple of sets of twins, for example. So, there's four of the kids. My question to you for Hatfield Public Schools is the elementary school is 24 and the middle is six and the high, are they coming back here after they're done with the elementary? And that was one facet of the question. And the other is, do you know how many families that actually represents when, in Hatfield?
We haven't tracked when they're coming back, per se, and as far as how, what those, who those students are, we do have that information. Every year, we report out our school choice students and where they're coming from and all the districts do the same thing. So, I have like a list that we compile and it gets sent to the state. It's part of our, it's like the January census data. So, we do have that, something I could look at. I haven't had a chance to look at that, but we could if, if it was something Brian was interested in.
Well, I'm just, I'm also wondering how many families it's represented. I mean, because I know that, I know of three, I know of five kids that are, of two families that would account for 19 of those right there. And so, I'm just wondering, I mean.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to stick gas. We'd have to look that up.
Look it up, okay.
Jennifer, I want to thank you for being here. Thank you for presenting this information. And remember, this is for our school committee that does our annual vote. I'll let you folks question.
So, we just, what we need is a motion on the floor to withdraw from participation in the school choice program for the 2013-2014 school year.
I move that.
Okay, and is there a second on that motion? So, again, a vote in the affirmative would withdraw us from that program. So, I believe the recommendation of the administration would be for the school committee to oppose that motion. So, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
No.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Any abstentions? Okay, great. So, the motion fails as we, as we had hoped. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Enjoy your evening.
Okay, the, next we have a series of gifts. The first is a gift of $3,275 and this is from Northampton High School PTO. Do we want to take these together or do you want to discuss them individually or?
I guess it's up to you. We can vote them all together if you want us to address them individually. This is pretty standard, PTO gifts to the schools for grants to teachers and NHS and at the elementaries for, to support our technology initiatives. And a reminder that all checks given to the district are given to us for the general fund. They do not necessarily get earmarked for specific schools, so we take these dollars and we support all of our schools equally.
So, as I had the question, I just want to pose the question, could we consider them as a group, I guess?
Will we have a question on that? I mean, Ryan Road School, are they still?
They pulled that.
They did pull it out, okay.
So, it would just be the three for the high school, Jackson Street and JFK Middle School. So, I already mentioned the NHS gift. There's a $4,500 gift from Jackson Street PTO and a $5,760 gift from the JFK Middle School PTO.
I move that we accept them all.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Mrs. Minnick, do you have a question?
Yes, the superintendent just said this was pretty standard and to receive gifts like this. And in my recollection, it's not so standard and this is actually just a wonderfully generous thing on behalf of the PTOs. I wonder if you have some background that you could give us as to how they came up with this because I would not want them to think that we're doing this as a matter of routine.
Standard acceptance according to policy.
Okay.
Standard generosity. Exceptional generosity. Thank you for pointing that out. I wouldn't want to be misunderstood. I would have to say that the, our initiative in technology has been exciting for our families and our teachers. They've been waiting for this and they're really feeling the changes that our new Director of Innovative Instruction and Technology, Angelo Rodes, seated in the back, has brought to our district. And the, not just the equipment, but the training and the care and the teaching that he does and his team is doing with the teachers has been very well received, just making a big difference in our district. And I have to say that the article in the Gazette didn't hurt us at all. Parents read that, PTOs read that and they said, "We want to be a part of supporting Angelo, supporting the teachers and helping the schools." And they really stepped up and came forward with these generous donations to help us.
Well, I just, my own personal perspective, I know that, I can remember when I sat on the PTO thinking that there were a lot of things that were going on that the school department or the school system itself, the district should have been paying for and that I felt were already falling to PTOs and that was some 20 years ago. And it's only worsened over the years, the number of things that the district is no longer able to provide and the slack that the PTOs are picking up. So, for them to commit this level of funding to something says that they really do support it and appreciate it. So, I'm, I'm kind of awestruck by their generosity and I'd like to say to the PTOs how much we appreciate their commitment to this, their support of what's going on and their generosity, knowing that they could be spending it on field trips or something else, but they've chosen to put it all together in a big lump and hand it to us. I think, I just thank you to the PTOs.
Well, on Lisa's point to go, they are handing it to us. However, looking at the memos and having attended Ryan Road's PTO meeting last night, we're withdrawing the gift or at least at this point, best postponing it is because of some misunderstanding. And the superintendent started off saying that we can't earmark it, that it's going for it. And yet, the memos at the bottom of the, they say smart board projectors, document purchase of 12 projectors for JFK. And the PTO is in an interesting position as far as, I think, as far as the giving of the gifts because the PTOs basically represent their own schools. So, I'm not sure that there's a complete understanding, just by the fact that there's memo lines stating what it's for, that there's a complete understanding of the process or the fact that it goes to the district and the technology fund. And I know from last night, going in and talking to Mark today and getting some clarification that I'm pretty sure, and I'm not actually positive because it was kind of iffy last night, but that it's not really understood. The process isn't really understood. And then to further that one step, the fact that all of the other three checks that we're accepting have on it a purpose and the memo line tells me that it's not understood. So, I just wanted to address that and also address the idea that the acceptance of gifts should be, I think it should be looked at with this in mind, that, because a PTO, I think, falls into a different category than a business or a community funded. There are people that work really hard to get their schools and to further their schools. And I was hoping that somebody from Ryan Road would come and at least present the issues as far as that they had. And I'm just wondering if the other schools, because when I went, they were prepared to accept it and give the gift and they gave it and they all voted on it previously and it was wonderful. And then they, they received information with some of it, I'm not sure is exactly accurate, but they did receive information and then they voted to, well, they wanted to vote to rescind it, they didn't have a quorum. So, at that point, they're just postponing it. But I think that we need to help people understand at the levels that they can't put anything in the memo line because it really doesn't matter if that's the case. And it is very, very generous and they could be spending it on other things. And what's to prevent them, and I guess the issue last night was what's to prevent them from taking part of our technology budget, applying it, whatever goes to their school and then the PTO further supplementing the technology budget. And, and I think they had some valid points, some very valid points. And so, I think that the way that the gifts are given to the PTO or from the PTO might be classified differently so that they could go back to their school, but so that they still ended up taking, and they all need something. They all need something technologically wise, as long as nobody went above. I don't know, it's hard. I think Mark should explain it because Mark explained it really well to me today as far as if you give it to one school and they get it, even if they get it first, the next year it could be given to another school. And then eventually everything's just going to keep going because we don't have it all to give at once. Is that sort of what it was?
I'll take that, if that's all right.
Thank you.
You have a lot of questions in what you just said.
And what I know.
Had a couple of them. First, what people write in the memo line is their recommendation. That's what they would like to see happen. And if we can fund the school in that area, that's what we would intend to do is to honor their wishes. There is a difference between the elementary school and the high school. The high school is actually giving the money to those specific teachers who they're giving grants to and the elementary is for technology and that's their recommendation of how we would spend it. According to school committee policy and as we discussed very recently here, when people give us money, they give it to us for us to use as, in our general fund. So, this money goes into a technology account and we try to fund all of the schools equally. I think that's a very good system. We don't want to be in the business of letting a wealthier neighborhood support their school far and above another school so that the technology is uneven. Now, I know that that already exists in some schools because of some past experiences, but we are trying to be more equitable for all of our students and to try to spend our money equally. So, when we get donations from a PTO for their school, we're able to use our technology money to balance off at other schools that maybe didn't get a donation. So, we can move their allocation around. But in the end, all schools are better because of these donations. And if there are specific questions from PTOs, rather than trying to address it here, Mark or me would be happy to come to a PTO meeting and address specific questions that way.
Thank you. I have one more question. You said that the one from Northampton High School is to pay for the grants and the grants that I add up is, what, 2,500 maybe? Thousand, 2,000, yeah, something like that. I'm not real good. They're not lined up really well. But it's not $3,275 and so, I'm wondering the discrepancy of the little note above it and that, and the price, the amount.
Right. They want, they have, they accept grants from the teachers. The teachers are accepted and so, they want that money to go to these five teachers for those projects that the PTO is accepting. I can't speak to the additional funds right on hand. Mark, can you? Or can we get back to you on that?
We'll get back to you and it, the narrative in the email does add up to 3,000. The check is for more than what was on here. I think maybe somewhere in the narrative, either that something was missed or something wasn't added, but the check is more for, is more in money than what is in the email.
Okay. So, are there any other discussion or questions about the, accepting these three gifts? There's been a motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so, thank you to the PTOs for those generous gifts. Next, we'll move on to a couple of recommended votes put forth by the Rules and Policy Committee, one on technology acceptable use policy and then health policy for physical examination of students. And I'll turn it over to Mrs. Minnick.
Right. These two policies came to you in January. It seems like it was eons ago, but maybe it was just a month ago, for their first reading and they are coming back to you tonight for a vote. And if you will indulge me, I'm going to move approval of the policies and then immediately give you a suggestion for amendments of these policies. So, I didn't disregard comments from people last month, but the policies that you're, that you received in your packet, I believe, are the exact same as what you received in January. So, with that said, I move approval and the Rules and Policy Committee recommends approval of the acceptable use policy.
Second?
We're talking.
Is that a second, Ms. Pick? Okay, so, there's been a motion made and seconded on the technology acceptable use policy and then do you have?
Yes. Yes, after, after the committee received this policy and had a chance to look at it, I received a request from Andrew, which was forwarded to Angelo, who agreed that it made perfect sense. And so, we are, I move that the, I move that the policy be revised as follows. If you go to the second paragraph, the stuff that's in italics, it says, "In order to provide a proper message to the community, staff posted content on the internet includes what is not limited to." Is that where it's going to be, Andrew? Right there?
Yes.
Okay. The motion then is to amend it by saying, "Staff posted content on publicly accessible websites, not just the internet." So, and maybe I could get you or Angelo to speak to your, well, so that's my motion to amend.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay.
And now, discussion. So, the gist of it is that when we talk about the internet, you're talking about anything that travels, any type of a network between any, so if someone were to email a picture of a student from Angelo's computer and Brian's computer, it would be a violation of the policy. I don't think that's the spirit of the policy, so I wanted to restrict it to publicly accessible websites to give ourselves some room to operate.
So, and Angelo is here, he can speak for himself, but it's my understanding that he thought that was a perfectly acceptable revision to the policy.
He's nodding yes.
Okay, so, the, there's a motion to amend, so the vote would be on that amendment. So, all those in favor of accepting the amendment to the proposed policy, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so, now the question is on the amended acceptable use policy. Any discussion or questions about that? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the policy, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? So, the policy is adopted. And I'll have you continue.
So, the other policy that you had. So the other policy that you had given to you last month was the physical examinations of students. And the Rules and Policy Committee recommends, and I move that this policy be accepted as presented. Second.
Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded.
Okay, because I'd like to make a motion to amend it. At our last meeting, I believe it was Howard who had a concern about school physician examining school employees. And after hearing your concern, Karen, who's also here, has recommended that the last sentence of the policy, now read, "The school physician will examine school employees upon referral by the school nurse, when in his/her opinion, the protection of the student's health may require it." Did that capture what you?
I captured what I was.
So that, my, so my motion is to amend the policy by adding the word "upon referral by the school nurse."
I second the motion to amend.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Moore?
We also have, it would be a technical correction, the apostrophe should go after the s.
Correct.
Yes, I think that I agree with you. I started to say that just now.
Yes, that captures exactly what I was thinking, it was like, what would prompt the school physician to go around examining people? So I think that's an excellent amendment.
Okay, so any other questions or discussion on the amendment?
And I assume that you were perfectly okay with that amendment.
Okay, so we have another nod from the audience. Good. Yes. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the amendment is accepted, so we're back to the question of the amended policy. Any discussion on the, on the physical examination of students policy? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? So the policy is accepted. Ms. Minnick?
And to, while it's not a vote this evening, I just wanted to go ahead and finish up the Rules and Policy Subcommittee. It did meet in January following our last full school committee meeting, and we did discuss at length the rules of procedure for this body. The result of that meeting was that it was recommended, that there were some changes recommended, and that the, and a vote was taken to recommend the rules of procedure as revised to this body for discussion and approval tonight. However, upon further examination, it would appear that, and basically that was, we said, okay, now, these are the big things, now go back and make it match the charter. And when we got started doing that, it just looked like a bloodbath, to be perfectly honest, because I did it in red. Maybe I should have used blue or green, but anyway, it looked really bad. I think we just decided we needed to look at it one more time before we bring it to you in a completely revised form. So for that reason, you are not seeing it here this evening, and I'm asking for your indulgence that it be sent back to the Rules and Policy Subcommittee meeting for one more go-round, and it will come back to you, I hope, at the March meeting, if we can schedule a Rules and Policy meeting before then.
Yeah, I mean, I think it didn't come before us tonight because it's not on the agenda, so I think the, it would just be assumed that it would be still waiting further deliberation in the committee.
I was very concerned that there was a vote taken in the Rules and Policy Subcommittee to bring it to this full committee, and it did not get on the agenda.
And I, I.
When there was a duly, when there was a vote taken by a duly-appointed committee, you know, a standing subcommittee at a public meeting, to send it here, not to put it on the agenda was concerning to me. So I'm, I, I'm okay with it's going back, but I wanted this committee to know why it wasn't here, because the rules themselves actually say that anything referred to a subcommittee comes back to the full school committee at the next meeting. So we were like.
So you're not allowed to deliberate over multiple meetings on a?
I think that we would have to say that, you know, ask for, you know, time to consider it further, but.
I'll move to refer the matter back.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Read, 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 read first.
Okay, so all those in favor of referring the rules back to the Rules and Policy Committee? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Okay, great, so we'll do that. The, any other items from the Rules and Policy Subcommittee?
I hope not. Because I don't, I forgot them if they were.
So we'll now move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. Bring you up to date on a few things, and then I'll get to the highlights of our schools. Just want to let you know that since our last meeting, we are putting our finishing touches on the district improvement plan, doing this over the next few weeks, and we'll, we will be able to have it ready for you to vote on in the April meeting is my goal. I want to remind you that our administrators and teacher leaders have completed their training on the educator evaluation tool with our MTA trainers. We receive training on all six modules, including observations and evidence gathering, and then the training continues on during the faculty meetings, during the building meetings with departments, and also during our next professional development late start on March 13th. To remind all of you that fifty percent of our teachers are currently under the new observation supervision system, and it seems to be going very well. Our ad hoc late start committee, high school late start committee, is underway. They've had a few meetings now and requested information from us in the central office. I believe they're getting what they need in a fast and productive way, and seeing some nods, that's good. Their plan, of course, is to have some proposals or report back to us by April 1st.
Would you just quickly announce who those members are? I think it was in the newspaper, but.
Uh, no, but maybe one of our school committee members.
You want to take a stab at it? I'll take a stab at it, and you tell me who I've forgotten.
There's two high school students, Ezekiel Vaskin and Johanna Renaud. There's two high school teachers, Janet Hicks and Randy Gordon. There are several community members, one, 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 a former school committee member, Lucy.
Lucy Hartry.
Hartry.
Who's the chairman.
Who's the chair of our committee. And a former school nurse, and who's.
Best debt mold. Actually, she's also a former school committee member.
Also a former, yeah, best debt mold. And a parent of a high school kid.
Harvey Hill.
Harvey Hill. And a local entrepreneur, Steve Harrell. And I believe that's everybody.
And the school committee reps? Two of you?
Both of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. I sent you a note, I believe yesterday, the building safety committee met, following the recommendations from the principals, who worked with their faculties on looking at recommendations to improve safety in our schools. They submitted their lists. We met with the members of the police department to review those lists and to begin to set priorities, things that we can do to feel safe and also to be safe, and then things that we can do within our budget and things that will require budget requests for the future. I just want to remind you and remind the public that our safety plans and security measures are not public information, but I wanted everybody to know that that's something that we're working on, and we can continue to develop and improve our practices. I've been doing my listening sessions in the schools with the teachers over the lunch periods. It's something I enjoy very much, and it seems the teachers enjoy it as well. I get pages of notes from them and have wonderful conversations. I've completed three schools so far, Jackson Street, the high school in Bridge. I've had to reschedule thanks to snow days. Two of the other schools, but I should have those all finished in the next two or three weeks. I wanted just a reminder to all of you and to parents at home, that kindergarten registration will begin very soon. This information is posted on our district website, or you can call the district office, and we can give you the date and time for your school, in case you don't remember, have a chance to write it down right now. Bridge Street registration is on Tuesday, February 26th, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. Leeds Elementary is Wednesday, February 27th, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. Jackson Street School is Tuesday, March 5th, again from 2:00 to 6:30 p.m. And RK Fin Ryan Road Elementary School kindergarten registration is on Thursday, March 7th, from 2:00 to 6:30 p.m. Remember, your children are welcome. They have people there to help supervise the students and coloring stations set up, so bring your family along with you when you come to register. The highlights, this month I focused on nonfiction writing. One of the elements of a successful curriculum, K-12, is nonfiction writing. And I wanted to give you an example of what's going on in our schools around this. You have some in front of you from Leeds, the third graders were working on persuasive writing, and they were trying to persuade me to have more snow days. They are convinced it worked because they gave this to me two weeks ago, so they are feeling great about their nonfiction writing.
Persuasive.
At Bridge Street School, the kindergarten is writing about and studying Japan. They're reading the Magic Treehouse book and the Night of the Ninja. They're writing about Japan and the people, the geography, the customs, origami, calligraphy, food and tea ceremonies. The third grader to Bridge Street just completed a nonfiction unit on writing informational all about books. They explore the features of a text and learn how each feature helps a reader better understand a nonfiction text, and then the students apply the knowledge when they wrote their own informational books. Out at Ryan Road, the teachers throughout the grades are implementing nonfiction writing expectations of the new Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. First graders in Mrs. Ramsden's and Miss Egito's class have been writing persuasive letters, including one to the principal asking for a classroom pet. The second graders in Mrs. Dillman and Mrs. Brady's classes have just completed all about books and about a topic of their own choice. The topics range from bees to skateboarding. The fourth graders in Miss Desmond's and Mrs. Simmons' classes have written nonfiction articles about the natural world and have detailed reflections on their nature field trips. At Jackson Street, the first graders wrote essays to Principal Gwen Agna for their persuasive writing unit. Each essay identified a school issue that the writers felt should be fixed, including not using the school compost, not touching the artwork on the walls, no running in the cafeteria, and why students shouldn't cut in line. The essays also suggested solutions for each of the problems, and Miss Agna answered each essay and dutifully addressed those problems the students pointed out. At JFK, the grade six students have been working on nonfiction writing pieces, including first one, students would choose a memory or experience to create a memoir. One student wrote night flying, detailing her first time on a Ferris wheel and the good luck of being on the ride during a fireworks show. The second piece was developing how-to instructions to teach a skill or a task. Two students worked together, and one of the products was an essay, Cooking is the Essence of Life, which also included instructions on how to cook a fried egg. The grade seven students have been writing about the short story Ricky Ticky Tavi. The students analyzed the character, the main character, as both a hero and a villain, and then used text evidence to support their views. And the grade eight students just completed writing pieces analyzing a literary essay for how the author develops tone and conveys emotion through the use of literary devices. Over at the high school, the AP Modern U.S. History class wrote three letters to the editor, conservative, liberal, and socialist, from a 19th century political perspective in response to contemporary American issues. As part of their final exam, students in the mostly ninth grade foundations of art had to choose a work of art and write an interpretation, description, analysis, and evaluation of the piece, and then they also did a visual interpretation. And now a few comments on our budget development. As I mentioned, at our last meeting, when I presented the draft of the district improvement plan, and then shared with you some of our budget concerns and the direction we are going in building our draft budget, which will be presented to Budget and Property on February 27th in Subcommittee, and then to the full school committee in a special budget meeting on February 28th. Our allocation from the mayor is that we will have level funding, plus we have an increase to our chapter 78 of around approximately $69,000. So what this means to us as we build our budget, we take a look at some of our needs, the collective bargaining agreement that we have in place, and also the teacher lane changes. If we look at just those two numbers, ballpark figure would be about $690,000. If we look at what our legal expenses will be through the collective bargaining process and the increase in the new bus contract, estimated at $160,000. We have something unique on here that is critical for us and worthy of explanation, and that is, our technology team and department, they don't have a vehicle for their, to transport the computers and the technology and the switches and things that they move from building to building. And so they actually load the things in their own cars, which is not good for the equipment. Put them very carefully in the backseat or in the trunk, but this is not a good way for us to be moving our technology equipment. Plus, we're asking people to use their personal vehicles to move our school equipment. And so they've requested that we find some way to rent or lease a used van, something that we can use to move our technology equipment from building to building for proper installation and care. And that's something that we're, we're adding to the budget. It's cost about $20,000 as an estimate, not purchasing a new van or anything like that, but just trying to find some appropriate transportation between the buildings for our technology team. Also, we are factoring in the circuit breaker reduction, given the nine seat cuts that we had this year. We are estimating that we're not going to get that money back for next year's budget, so it's important for us to factor that in to our number. If I look at just those highlights of things that we need to put into our budget, look at about $905,000 or so that we need to add or account for in building our budget. If I subtract a few things like the chapter 70, the $69,000, if I factor in some very conservative figures from some ideas that I expressed to you, that being if we were to institute a fee for kindergarten students, if that fee were to be as much as $3,000, divided by 10 months, be $300 a month for families to have the full day kindergarten, and if we consider the sliding fee scale and so forth, so it's not just the number of students times 3,000, it would be much less than that. The conservative figure Mark and I come up with is about $288,000 that we could generate from kindergarten fees. If we went with the idea of reducing busing at the high school, that we would only bus kids K through 8, we took the routes away at the high school, we would save roughly $47,000. If we were to do a slight increase in our lunch fees and in our athletic fees, and these are not, well, it's significant for family who has to pay it, but it's not significant for us, we think we could get about $15,000 each, so a total of $30,000 from food service and athletic fee increases. What I calculate from just those highlights, we could come up with savings or an increased revenue generation of about $434,000. So given the increases, we need in our budget of 905, and those few things that I mentioned so far, 434,000, those are uncomfortable, unsavory things for us to do. We all know that. Even at that, I would still need to find a way to cut $471,000 from our budget, or roughly nine to 10 full-time equivalent employees, teachers, that would have to come from our schools. This is the very difficult budget that we're working on. It's not pleasant for me to share that with you or to share with the public, but I think it's important that I don't surprise any of you with the draft budget that we bring forward in two weeks. And I'll pause for thoughts and comments, unless you want me to just leave it at that for the superintendent's report.
Mr. Moore?
I have a question whether charging tuition for a portion of the kindergarten day, does that have any effect on the quality, kindergarten quality grants? Because you have to.
No.
Is it going to give a half-deck cost clause?
We're not sure how it plays into the school choice money. We believe we need to, we're checking on all the details before we present this to make sure that, you know, we've done it all around as we cross our teeth. But with school choice, you'd have to let the parents know upfront before they apply for school choice, that there would be a fee attached to full day kindergarten, so that we want to accept them to school choice, give the school choice money, and say that there's a fee. So it would have to be well communicated and transparent.
I have a question on the $47,000 eliminating the bus to the high school and it possibly being in need. And we discussed previously, Howard brought up, with the school start time was going on a two-tier system, with the high school students being on a bus with the elementary or something along those lines. I'm not going to get into the details because it doesn't really matter. The idea that I'm thinking of is, would it be something that we could look at again? And, you know. that we could look at again, and, you know, still keep, I mean, still reduce something, but be able to provide transportation still to the high school students? I mean, it's not ideal to have, you know, elementary and high schools together, but it's definitely not ideal not to get our kids to school if they're having problems to get to school, even though it's not mandated, I understand, but seeing if we could work out some sort of collaboration.
Remember that this year, we did refine our bus service practice. We maximized the capacity of our buses, we extended the routes as much as we're comfortable extending the routes, we don't want kids on buses for an hour and 20 minutes, you know, and combining routes just makes things take longer. I feel like it's about as efficient as it could be. I do understand that the two-tier system has some attractive qualities to it, I don't know that financial savings more than this would be there. The times that we've looked at it and asked, Joy, we need to look at it, it's different, but not necessarily better, as far as the financial picture goes, but we will be looking at everything, because with a budget gap this large, we will be examining everything to find out what we can do, because again, my goal is to try to reduce things that don't touch the classroom. We want to preserve that relationship with the teachers and the students in the classroom as much as possible, and I don't want to be jumping to increasing class sizes or merging classes at the elementary, those are things that will have to be a very, very last resort. I want to try everything else first.
And trying everything else first is what I'm bringing up, as far as the, I mean, if we have to eliminate, I suppose we have to eliminate, but if there's some way that we can work it together to have the, you know, wouldn't it cost so much, I don't know, I have no idea, but so we would still be providing transportation to the high school students, because I think that the kids that take the bus, a lot of them probably need to take the bus to get there.
There is no way that we can provide the same level of service we're providing this year and cut $900,000. We have to know that, we have to accept that. So we can't say, gee, we don't want to do that, let's find another way to still offer that service, we can't do that, and have a responsible budget.
So that that's, that's it, it's eliminate the high school, there's no attempt to try to work out some.
Oh, no, as I just said, we will be looking at everything, but I want you to understand, this happens all the time, this happened last year too, and we said, well, unfortunately we had to cut the literacy coaches, well, no, we have to find a way to save them, well, no, you can't save the things that are very important to us and still reduce your budget, we can't do that.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions with the superintendent regarding this report? Okay, the next item is the business manager's report.
Thank you. Some of the things in the business manager's report, I'll, I'll skip over, because the superintendent had covered some of them in regards to budget, but I'll just start off with some of the noteworthy items, just as, just as an update for the public and for everybody else's. The mayor presented his vision at the joint budget meeting with the city council and the school committee on January 31st, in regards to the overall financial condition and status of the city. The budget process, as you know, we're under compressed timeframes this, this time around for this year, and again, those are as a result of the charter that's in place. Attached to the report is a financial statement that you see each month in regards to the various line items that we have within the budget. For the most part in the budget, we're progressing pretty much on schedule, there's some, some line items that are over and some that are under, but still moving forward with ongoing meetings with the special ed department, and reviewing with them their expenses, trying to track those, because we know that those expenses are over, and you can see those on the financial report. The student information system, as you know, the Starbase system is no longer going to be supported, we have looked at potential vendors, we've now narrowed it down to two finalists, we're contacting other school districts to make sure, you know, the references and their recommendations are strong for the, the final two vendors, and hopefully we will finalize by the end of this month as to who our final vendor is, and make a selection, and that hopefully will be reported out to you at the March meeting. I do want to make note of the maintenance line item that I put on here, I'd like to thank the maintenance and custodial staff for their quick responses to several water pipe breaks, other, you know, and other heating problems over the eating, the two-week deep freeze we had a few weeks back, doesn't seem like we had a deep freeze today, it was wonderful outside, but prior to this, we've had a few problems with the severe cold weather. One of the other noteworthy items is the food service line item, you know, we're still providing quality meals, we've met or surpassed all the USDA requirements, we've applied for the six cents meal allowance based upon our number of meals served, the district costs for many of the food products continue to rise, as well as other school districts having the same problem as a result of weather conditions and other financial situations. The food director is reviewing our meal plan, and is trimmed back on some of the volumes of the different foods that we have, to try to eliminate any waste that might be there as a result of some of the new USDA requirements. So we're still looking into that, and there'll be more information forthcoming in the budget and property meetings that are, that'll be coming up. Capital plan items, we're still doing some specifics of the approved capital items, and I'll be specific for the FY13 capital items. So we're still working on the details with central services and the technology department. The budget process, based upon what the superintendent had just presented, where we are with our status, and we're going to need more meetings to discuss and do further research on various areas that we can refine, look at cost savings, places that we know that there are going to be increases, and other opportunities that we might be able to reduce certain parts of the budget.
Are there any questions regarding the business manager's report? Okay, hearing none, the personnel report you've presented as part of the packet.
Again, a one-page personnel report, you have the new hires during the month of January, the separations and retirements that had taken place during that month.
Okay. Is that a typo, the alt teacher, is that alp, or alt?
Michael Weaver, second one down, new hires.
Oh, yeah, there should be a P there, it was a typo.
Okay. I didn't know what an alt was.
Turn the learning program.
Had to find out. Okay, thank you very much for those reports. So that moves us into new business, I actually have one new business item, and that's actually, I wanted to amend a couple of the committee assignments that I made earlier in the evening, and that was for the Budget and Property Committee, actually, the, the three names would be Mr. Zahouski, Mr. Bourne, and Mr. Moore, and then on Rules and Policy Committee, Ms. Minnick, Ms. DeVal, and Ms. Pick would be the three members of Rules and Policy. So that's a mid-meeting change, if you will, that I wanted to announce under new business. Any other new business items?
Is there not, because the agenda does not have this meeting, which I believe is scheduled, I want to check, but there's the Tuesday, March 5th, there's the Budget and Property Meeting with the School Councils at JFK. And so I don't know if that's new business or simply a technical.
Yeah, we should have had that on there.
So we'll just.
There's actually three missing meetings on there, so I apologize for that, because we have 27 Budget and Property, which is, is pending still, actually, there's some people who think they might not be able to make that, so you'll hear from me early next week about that. And then on the 28th, there's the school committee meeting, so, which is a budget school committee meeting, the second meeting in February, so I should have that on there as well.
And we'll make sure we get those posted as well.
Yeah.
And then, I'm sorry, and then for an additional new business, the spelling.
Yes, I know you had asked about discussing that further in new business.
I think we just need a straw poll if people are willing to.
Chip in.
Chip in their, their, their tenth of the fee, and. Will we have three spellers on the team? So I would certainly am in favor of, of participating, it's a wonderful, wonderful event.
Yeah, I'm willing to contribute, not spell, but I can.
Do we think among us, we have three people who are willing to, to, and to spell?
Alden, Mike, and.
Alden usually has its own business.
Student rep.
I've done it two years in a row, it's a whole lot of fun.
It is a lot of fun.
So if somebody wants to take my place, that's fine, but I'd be happy to do it again.
I'll do it if no one wants to do it.
Okay, then.
So is that agreement that we want, so. Do, you two and. I'm willing to collect this, so if you all want to write out checks, you can write, write it out right to NEF and give it to me, and then I will, I'll pass them all in together. Okay, and if you could get those to me, if anybody has their checks, you can do it tonight, but, let's see, by the next meeting, more meeting in two weeks? So if you could bring your checks in two weeks and give them to me, then I will put them all together and pass them in.
Okay.
It's okay.
Are there any other new business items? We've already discussed the future meetings, and so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? The meeting is adjourned.